Okay, we will call to order this meeting of the Towns Superior Planning Commission for May 4, 2010. Phyllis, if you'd call the roll, please.
Chairperson John Kretkraut.
Here.
Commissioners Cook, Folsom.
Here.
Paul Sardine here.
James McGuinness.
Here.
Bob McCool. Craig Presteseder. Michelle Ripmester.
Here.
Tom Rucker.
Here.
Assistant Town Manager Matt Magley.
Here.
Planner Fred Fox.
Here.
Attorney Kendrick Carberry.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Item three is public comment on a consent agenda and non-agenda items. If anyone in the viewing audience, if we're in the presence of the commission, would like to come forward and speak on items on the consent agenda or on non-agenda items, this is your opportunity. Seeing none, okay, we can move on to item four, the consent agenda approval of the March 16th, 2010 minutes. Does everyone have a chance to review the minutes? Any discussion, comments? Maybe we want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No, the minutes.
No, it's the consent agenda.
Wait.
Oh, it's the consent.
The entire consent agenda, it just happens to be the minutes, so.
Minutes.
Okay, gotcha.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that was a motion by Commissioner Folsom and a second by Rucker?
Ricker.
Ricker, sorry.
You can't give my name straight.
I know, I'm sorry.
That's terrible.
Commissioner Ricker, okay, got it, okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Raise your hand.
It wasn't here.
It wasn't here, okay. So that's four yays and one abstention. Five yays and one abstention. Okay. Okay, moving on. Item five, new business, a public hearing modification of the Superior Municipal Code, Land Use Code, Chapter 16. Phyllis, is there proof of publication?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Oh, I didn't officially open it, I guess. We'll open the public hearing, sorry. So we have proof of publication. Presentation?
Yeah.
Okay.
First, I'd like to introduce Christine Stroteski. Is that all right? Did I butcher it? Christine is a new addition to Kendra's firm, Ace Phillips Hoffman and Carberry, and she'll be, I think eventually.
She'll be your lawyer.
For the planning commission.
That's right.
Taking the place of Carissa, who moved to Seattle.
Yes.
So, onto greener pastures.
And rainier.
Yes, yeah, and rainier. So, glad to have Christine on board. And just want to start out with that, sorry. So we have a public hearing tonight for the revision of Chapter 16, which is also referred to as the land use code. In 2008, the town board began the process of updating this Superior Municipal Code and all the chapters within it. Hadn't been updated in, like, complete overhaul like we did for some time, so they, in 2008, they decided that that is something they wanted to do. In 2009, we completed most of the chapters within the municipal code, except for, I think, this chapter and Chapter 3, which is special district. So, we're pretty close to getting the entire municipal code updated. Tonight, we have the revised land use code that we've provided a black line copy based on the comments of the planning commission as we've gone through the past year. Started the process in 2008 with staff review. Kendra's firm did a majority of revisions and updates in late 2008, and the planning commission started its review in 2009, and we're at the point now where we can have the public hearing and move forward with recommendations to the town board. In that time, the planning commission, in my count, has held at least 12 public meetings on Chapter 16 and the revisions, and eliminated approximately over 100 pages and up to 35,000 words, so it's been a major overhaul of Chapter 16. So a lot of work's gone into it, both on the staff and planning commission level. Attached to the revised land use code, you have three lists. One, the first list is items that were identified by the planning commission for future consideration at the planning, at the public hearing, sorry. The second list is items that the planning commission identified that could be incorporated into the revised code and have been. And then the third list was the questions to the town attorney that we reviewed with her at a previous meeting this year. Some of the major revisions that you'll find in Chapter 16 include, the articles and sections have been renumbered so that they flow better and are in the same format as what you find in other chapters within the code. The development process has been reformatted so that it takes place in a more uniform and orderly manner, so that you have zonings, you have minor plat, major plat, minor subdivision, major, and they all flow, depending on what the application is. The notice section for public notices has been reformatted and revised so that it's easier to, to follow. We've got a standard submittal section now that people can refer to to see what they need to submit. See, we've eliminated the call-up provision, or that's what we're recommending, but we'll discuss that further tonight to make it more clear to developers what the process for final approval is. We've incorporated appendices into the code. This eliminates the cross-referencing, and we've updated the language so that any redundant language, for example, the annexation, has been taken out. The town attorneys have submitted criteria into the code now so that we have criteria in which we approve applications and decisions that aren't based on, I think. Oh, yeah, that.
That was a late.
That was a late change, but, and then Fred or Kendra, you've got anything to add as far as?
We deleted the kind of late change that didn't show up in your staff report or your cover memo, excuse me, was, we deleted the floodway standards because those are done by the county anyway, and all we kept having to do was update them every time the county did. So, it seems to me it would just be easier, we have to abide by the counties anyway, the county goes by urban drainage standards, so that this way we don't have to, every time the county or urban drainage updates something, we don't have to also do anything. So, that's the explanation for that, sorry, that didn't, I didn't get that to mat until late, because we just heard back from urban drainage that they are amending the floodway, floodplain regs again, they're about to again, so rather than try to keep up with them, we thought it would be more helpful or more efficient, I should say, to let the county deal with that, and we'll go by the county standards.
So, what staff's recommending for tonight is that we go through the list that the planning commission identified for future discussion at the public hearing, go through those outstanding items that remain on that list, see if we can come to a resolution on those items, and then open it up for any additional sections or articles that the planning commission would like to discuss or have questions about.
Okay. Yeah, I was, I think we want to probably start on the items for possible future consideration.
Yeah.
And we, I know we've already sifted through this once for items that were for no further discussion, and assuming that the commission feels the same, we should start on the items that are labeled further discussion and work through those individually. Is that acceptable? Okay, so, if that's the case, then the first item for discussion is Article 2, 1.3, Major Subdivision Preliminary Plat, that the decision at the planning commission level was changed to review and comment, and call-up at the board level was changed to decision.
And this is under, yeah, 16210, which is the chart.
Chart.
In your revised code, yeah, page 27.
So can someone refresh, at least my memory, on why this was changed? Clearly, this is a change from the current code.
Right.
And our role, our responsibilities, and the whole reason we're here seems to hinge on a lot of that, so could you refresh us?
Well, yeah, the, the major reason for the change here is the elimination of the call-up provision.
Right, I think that's why it was originally put on the list, because it had to do with the call-up.
Okay.
Yeah, and most of the changes you see in this chart are a result of the elimination of the call-up provision. So, we, staff feels that we, it's better for everybody involved, not just planning commission and town board, staff, but also the applicants, if we eliminate the call-up provision, and then we just thought, well, this is our recommendation to the planning commission, and you, the planning commission can make whatever changes you feel necessary. If you would rather have the decision at the planning commission level than?
Well, actually, and part of the reason this was called out was, was put on the list too, is because we were changing it from a decision at the planning commission to, to a decision at the town board level, which was sort of further eroding the jurisdiction of the planning commission, and so we just had the opportunity to make a recommendation to how the code should read into the board, as to whether we should do that or not. I guess the board has the opportunity to overturn any decision we make anyway, right?
Right.
So.
Decision is theirs.
Right.
Yeah, and the call-ups still, I mean, Fred's got a comment too, but the call-up, the way it is now, basically, the board's making the decision at that level.
But they just don't decide not to call it up, which means they agree.
For the, yeah, but for the developer, they don't know whether it's decided on at the planning commission level or ultimately if the town board's going to call it up or not, so that's.
And they have to have to prepare for some huge hearing at the board level because they don't know if it will be called up, and that's.
Right, instead, instead, this clears that up, they're saying, you're, you're going to get, make a decision, the decision will come at the board level in front of a, at a public hearing, I assume, right?
Yes, yes.
So, it takes that ambiguity out from the developer's side, but maybe the larger issue we're wrestling with is whether or not the planning commission should make a decision on a final plat or not, right? Do you have an opinion about that, Fred?
Well, I don't have an opinion, I just wanted to say that the code that you kind of, this group or groups before you sort of inherited, was changed because the town board felt that the planning commission should have a little bit more authority, and they wanted to streamline the process. This was done way back, you know, in the, in the 90s, late 90s, early 2000s, or maybe, you know, that's how far it went back. So that was a policy sort of desire on the part of the board back then, and then that carried through until we get to where we are now, where the new boards were wanting a little bit more input at the end, and some of the, the call-up was being used more than it had been in the past. So from my perspective, actually, it's sort of like, maybe this planning commission can suggest, you know, what they think they ought to maybe make a final ruling on, but it really is a policy matter on the part of the board to say, well, you know, now we've got it set up where everything has to come before the Board of Trustees. Do we really want to take all, keep all that on our shoulders or not? And then they, and they can decide, maybe based on some suggestions you might have, or maybe not, but just say, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to have to deal with it, and then make it clean, so that the decision, if they say it should stop with the planning commission, then that's it. There's no call-up, there's no confusion about that. So it would, really, it's a policy sort of matter that has to come from the board to say, you know, we think the planning commission should basically handle X, Y, and Z.
Except that this policy decision came from staff or this town attorney's recommendation and not from the board. Right.
Just to be clear, our recommendation's simply to get rid of the call-up, as far as who makes the final decision in each particular case.
Right, okay.
That's really what this commission wants to recommend to the board.
Okay. Thoughts?
I think eliminating, if we were to go shift the other way, to say that planning board makes more decisions and eliminate the call-up, I think that's a potentially much more major request, part of the board's level of authority than, than what's being proposed here, and I, and I don't think that would ultimately fly anyway. I think the board would want to retain that ability to call things up, and they probably should, so I'm, I'm probably more in favor of the way that it's proposed here.
Yeah, I thought, I thought originally too, I thought part of the reason this was proposed and why it came across this way is because the board was trying to shorten their meetings at that point in time, they had so much on their plates, that they were trying to give us some authority to say, boy, if you guys can take care of this and we don't have to spend time on it, our meetings are going to midnight every night. I don't think now they don't have as much on their plate because of some of the properties that have been handled from open space to, to other approvals, until possibly we get knee-deep in the town center. But then any decision on the town center is going to be a board decision, it's not going to be a planning commission. So I'm in favor of the way it's rewritten here because I just think it does clean it up for the developer. We've kind of gotten past the point of where we need to handle some of the more minor details so that the board doesn't have to address it, and I'm, I'm of the opinion that from the beginning, we weren't making any decisions anyway, that if it was called up, they were deciding, if it wasn't called up, they were just deciding we made the decision that they wanted, that they would have approved anyway. So I'm in favor of it also.
I'll jump in, because I'm opposed to it, just to get another opinion on the board. I, I mean, it, it seems to me the town has a planning commission so that they can focus on planning, and this planning commission has been stripped of responsibility continuously as I've watched it over the last several years, even before I joined. And I believe the right thing, and we see it in other towns, is that the planning commission should have the responsibility to make decisions related to planning, land use code, and everything else, period. And to make that clear to the board, I think, is important. I, I agree, it may not fly, but I'm not gonna, I, I don't feel like I want to sit here and say, well, hey, it's not going to fly anyway, you got, you got slightly new board, some changes to the board, we don't know what they're looking for, but they're, where they think responsibility should lie. And I think that planning responsibility should lie, would lie, should lie with the planning commission. If we just continue to, you know, just, well, just let us look at it, we'll tell you what we think, or why don't we just, you know, I mean, there's no authority, there's no reason for anybody to come to planning commission meetings, there's nobody, no reason for anybody to come here and listen to the planning commission, the people who are responsible for planning in this town, come down here and, and listen to those, to this group who's focused on planning for the town, and I think you're just gonna, I mean, there's no point, there'd be absolutely, almost no point for anybody to come down here and even pay attention to the planning commission. And then it'll probably eventually shift, as we get busy, to the same problem that you had years ago, where the board can't handle the planning requirements. So, my, I mean, I'm of the opinion that we should try to make it fly and give them what we believe is the right thing to do, you know, allow the planning commission to plan. If they want to do something different, it is ultimately their decision, but, so I'm not in favor of these changes in taking away decision, the decision authority, and I'd be, I'd be more in favor of leaving the decision authority with the planning commission and eliminating the call-up, if, or keeping it, if that's what they want, I mean, that's, you know, if that's important to them. I, I think removing the decision authority here removes the public's confidence in the planning commission, I think it just, it makes the board pretty much powerless, or the commission pretty much powerless.
But, I mean, we're not the elected body. I mean, I don't know what decisions ultimately we can make that are big decisions when we're not the elected body. I mean, the governments, my dad was a mayor, my father-in-law was a mayor, and so I've been following city government. The planning commission did the grunt work, they didn't make the decisions, and that's what I don't understand, is, is you're saying we should be able to make these decisions, I, I think it's our job to do the grunt work and to filter through it and get through to the, to the developer, and to work with the developer, not necessarily work, you know, the public can come in then, but the major voice the public has anyway, how many times have they sat here in our meetings and they said, oh, it goes to the board now, so I gotta go to that meeting too?
I'm not suggesting that it go to the board, I mean, my preference would be that it's not, and I think the fact that it's just review and comment, I mean.
Review and comment.
If it's our responsibility to make sure this land use code is being followed, I mean, that, that is the responsibility, then the board has to be just, it's up to speed as we are, it has to be just as knowledgeable with this code as we are, in order to be responsible for making those decisions, and I think that the concept is, is that the board appoints a planning commission to take those responsibilities, and that's just where I sit, I mean.
Well, and I think that those, those decisions, some of those decisions are not really, as you said, major decisions, but major decisions are going to ultimately still fall to the, to the, to the town board ultimately, but, you know, whether to do a preliminary plat or, you know, a final plat, you know, I, in most cases, I would say those aren't, right, exactly, in most cases, those are not major decisions, right, they're not policy-type decisions, they're not. So, yeah, I mean, I tend to, I tend to agree with you.
And you're aware that we can pick and choose which ones you want to go to the board and which ones you want the planning commission to have to find a part for this final decision.
Well, we can recommend, well, we can't pick, but we can recommend.
I mean, an example is conditional use permit. We removed the call-up provision, but we lacked the decision with the planning commission at public hearing.
Thoughts?
You know, I had the extreme good fortune of attending a planning commission in one of our fine neighboring municipalities, as a, as a developer's rep and as a member of the general public, and on this particular project, the administrative staff of the county is very much in favor of the project moving forward, and the insight that I gained was that the planning commission is viewed not as a helpful resource by either the town board or in this municipality, in that municipality, not necessarily in this one, because God knows, we care about the planning commission here in Superior, but to the point where the town administrator mentioned to me that, you know, there was something that they asked a question about that I was able, or would have been able to answer, but, and I mentioned that I could answer it, and he said, don't give them that to chew on. You give them that to chew on and we'll be here all night, just let them, just, just let them ask you the specific questions they're going to ask, and, you know, these planning commissions, they need to leave their mark, as in dogs marking their territory, and that's how the planning commission is viewed in, in that municipality, certainly not in this municipality, but, you know, so I, I think that we, while our intentions may be noble here, we maybe give ourselves a little too much credit, or take a little bit too much credit, or want a little bit too much credit, whereas, you know, what we're seen as by, you know, once, once somebody submits a plan, right, if it's gone through staff, you know, we're just in the way, we're a freaking roadblock, in their eyes, and so, you know, given that sort of mentality, there isn't, you know, I mean, I suggest we call a vote and just prove this thing the way it is and let it fall down the way it's going to fall down. That's my, that's my take. Because there's really been, you know, the, the winnowing away of the responsibility of the planning commission, the, the removal of, you know, our oversight, I mean, it's clear, the intention, the intention is to, to make the planning commission a necessary evil, but not a part of the planning process in the town, and I think that if that's the case, then we should just let that happen, because that's not our purview. It's not our purview to tell the town board, or the, the town staff, or anybody, that the planning commission has value, and if the value of the planning commission isn't seen, then it should just be, you know, left. It has to be here by law, because we're a statutory town, we have to have a planning commission, but it doesn't have to have any power, and it doesn't have to do anything. So, so, you know, we can, we can argue each one of these points up and down and backwards and sideways, but then we're doing exactly what it is that, you know, people accuse us of doing, and frankly, I think there's value in that, but, you know, there's a lot of people have been paid a lot of money to make this document look the way it looks now, and, you know, not without having reviewed it amongst themselves as professionals, and not without, you know, some, some commitment to the outcome. So for us to, for us to spend much time saying anything other than, okay, is sort of a waste of time. So, and, and we know that it's a waste of time, because, you know, all through this process, we haven't had a black line copy to work from, because nobody really gave a crap whether or not we thought that the.
Well, we're.
But I'm just saying, it's part, it's part and parcel of the same.
We're not going to go back on, you know, into that discussion again.
Well, it's not.
But, but we're at the point here where we're, we're literally down to, you know, dotting the i's and crossing the t's on it, and, you know.
So let's call them dotted and crossed and move on, that's what I'm saying.
Well, you know, I, hey, you know, the, you can make a motion anytime you want, so if you want to, you know, if we want to stop discussion and do that, that's fine, I, I mean, I think there's still value in, in reviewing these, these, you know, these items, and we owe it to the, to the public, because we told them we would go through a, a public hearing process to review these items that we felt were appropriate enough to call up, you know, call to their attention during, during a plant, during a public hearing, and we, I think we owe it to, to the, you know, to the public to do that. If the public chooses to watch on TV or they choose to show up here, I can't control that, but that's, you know, I, much of what you just said, I don't disagree with, but, you know, we still have an obligation to the, to the town and to the code to do this. I mean, in general, I think the, the body of work that, that has come out of this is, you know, a, a, an improved, readable approach to, to, to the Chapter 16, you know, the, because it was long and convoluted, you know, I think, if you'd, if you'd been given this code 10 or 15 years ago, you probably would have thought it was fine for the last 10 or 15 years. I think a lot of people would have thought that. I think a lot of people would've thought that, so, you know, I know we've done a lot of hard work on it so far, and I don't want to throw that away, and I think we owe it to the, as I said, to the, to the residents of the town to go through it, so.
And to ourselves. I mean, many of us have, I mean, we have opinions about this, that's why we have this list, and this, this list isn't one person's list of problems, this is the planning commission as a whole, individuals on the planning commission who had concerns about the, the code, and these are, I mean, these are them, so they, I mean, we have a, we have a responsibility to ourselves, to the public, to the board, to go through them, because we don't have a final, I mean, we haven't finalized this, that it, that it means.
But, but, but it's sort of philosophically, I think there are decisions that should remain at the planning commission level, because for exactly the reasons that the plant, that the town board decided this 15 years ago, which was that these are things that really don't, doesn't, the town board has bigger fish to fry, you know, and so, to the extent that we're putting our suggestion forth as, you know, for those purposes, that I'm, and for them to understand that in the context of why it was done in the first place, you know, I'd like to see it stay that way, and that both, both to avoid the continuing erosion of planning commission responsibilities, because I think what we do here is important, and A, and B, so that the town board doesn't have to monkey with it. And if the town board wants to, you know, change that, they're gonna, they're gonna do it anyway when they adopt it, so, my two cents on it. So, things like a preliminary plat and a final plat, which would've been, in the old code, decisions by the planning commission, I'd say we should recommend that they stay that way.
Do you, do you wanna go through each one of these?
On, on the chart?
Yeah.
Probably.
Okay.
We probably should.
All right. Well, let's, pre-application rezoning, special use permit, remain as they are in the current code.
I'm sorry, but where's this in the current code? You know right off?
Yes, it's 1652.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Conditional use permit remains decision with public hearing at the planning commission. Call-up was removed at the town board level. Temporary use permit, call-up at the board.
And I should, I should say, I mean, I do believe that the call-up, taking away the call-up provision is a good thing, right, for, for the streamlining of the development process, so that everyone knows what they're getting into when they, where, where the decision ultimately lies, so they know where to put their resources, right?
And isn't there a provision somewhere that if there is a problem, or somebody thinks that something was done incorrectly?
They can appeal it.
To set, that it can be appealed and brought forward, right? I mean, we're not
Right.
eliminating anybody's ability to, to, to call up an issue if, if they find one that's arisen, right?
Correct.
Yep.
And the US Supreme Court is still there.
Yeah, they are.
Site permit is approved at staff level. Usually those are identified in the, in the FDP, the requirements or guidelines. Pre-application under major subdivision, review and comment at staff level, is how it currently stands. Sketch plat was removed, since we don't, we no longer use that provision. Preliminary plat under major subdivision, this is, decision at planning commission was changed to review and comment, and call-up at board was changed to decision.
Yeah, I mean, was it in the old code?
Decision.
It was call-up at board and decision at planning commission.
Right, so, and at a preliminary plat level, I mean, does the town board really wanna see the preliminary plat level? A preliminary plat?
As you ask.
I mean, over there they may, right?
I don't know why, personally.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only comments I've heard, just to throw this out from others, when the planning commission sees the preliminary and then the board sees the final, they never get to see the preliminary.
The preliminary.
And so they have no idea what to expect, and then if they don't like it, they bought, the developer's already gone all the way down the road to get to the final, and then the board says, "I don't like this." If we had seen the preliminary, we never would've approved this, so, just to throw that out there.
Yeah.
That's a good point. That's a great point.
Let's draw, pull that one real quick.
Well, they get all of our minutes and all of our.
You're asking them to do extra homework, to dig in there and find it out, because they're not gonna put before them on an item that they actually have to review.
And, yeah, this is, this is a major subdivision, I understand.
If you think about where we are now in Superior, this is my own opinion, the board is gonna be concerned in reality about the development proposal, and what's, and the plat is gonna be something that's gonna support that development proposal when you think about what we're gonna be over here. The plat is, is almost like an afterthought, but it has to be done, because if you're gonna transfer property, obviously you have to have a plat. So, that's why I say, you know, I feel that, you know, I don't know why they bother, but I don't know if the board, you know, is, you know, understands that completely, that the real important part of the new stuff is gonna be the development proposal itself, and the plat will be an afterthought, because it'll have to be there to transfer property.
Particularly with major subdivisions, I think minor might be a, might be a different story.
But isn't it really the mechanism whereby the, the preliminary plat, public hearing, where the town board sees the development proposal? I mean, other than a, a work session? Right?
Yeah.
So, okay, if that's the case, then I would say leave it as is. Leave it the way it's drafted.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else?
No.
Is something? Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay? All right, so for now, we'll, same thing with final plat, right?
Yeah, and then final plat is the same, changes.
Right. Minor subdivision?
Minor subdivision, pre-application's same as review and comment by staff. Final plat is call-up provision changed at board level to decision, and decision at the planning commission was changed to review and comment.
So what's?
That's, I guess, where, does the, does the board really wanna see a?
The most recent minor subdivision we did was for the Boulder Valley.
And how do you qualify, what's a minor and a major?
Two acres of water.
Number of lots.
Yeah.
Six lots or less.
Six lots or less. Okay.
I'm fine with it.
Site development plan, no change at the pre-application level, sketch plan was deleted. Site development plan is review and comment at the planning commission, which was originally decision, and then decision at the town board, which was originally call-up. Site development plan is for those areas in town that already have current zoning.
We don't run into this very much, well.
No.
Because we usually go to PD anyway.
Then a site-specific development plan, the same changes, review and comment at planning commission, which was originally decision, decision at the town board, which was originally call-up.
Oh, and the SDP?
Kind of falls along the same process.
My, my opinion through all this is we, when we do our review, we have to be very focused on what our comments are to the board, and, and so that, you know, so that our review and comments get across the board, so they know our opinion, and to me, that's not that different from making a decision, and then they have, they review the decision and decide whether they wanna go with our decision or not. I, I just think we have to be, you know, very succinct and focused on, okay, what message do we really wanna send, send the board when we do this review and comment? And, I mean, I've been here, sitting here a long time, as well as you, and I don't think that, it doesn't change the end result from what it's been before call-up, or what it was after call-up. I mean, I don't know about you, I didn't notice any difference when we went to call-up, as far as were we really more empowered or making more decisions? We're just making decisions that were so easy, they didn't have to deal with them or wanna deal with them.
Right.
So I think.
Now they do, though, because under this, under this code, they have to, they have to have a hearing, and they're gonna make a decision.
Right. Yeah. If it streamlines the process for builder, I'm all for that, because we've seen a lot of frustration coming from there. And then the number, and you talk about the public input at this level, how many times have we had, other than a few major items or, or some major dealings with original town, have we really had crowds here? I mean, not that many in all the years I've been doing this. So, I think, I think just really focusing on what we're trying to do on the review and comment end of it is where we should wind up, is my opinion.
I guess I would agree with that, that, you know, review and comment, and be very specific with the recommendations to the board, and let them make that decision. Because if they're gonna call it up, you know, and they did for the Rocky Mountain fire, then we have to, you know, go through the whole process anyway, so.
Yeah, that was a 30-day delay for, you know.
Right.
And that's the thing, you know, it's not changing, it doesn't matter what this says, right, whether it's review and comment on our part, or decision on our part, it's still scrutinized by the board, and it doesn't represent a change at all in what we do, or how we do it. So, the reality is, the decision falls to the board. So, the code may as well read that it falls to the board. That way, at least, the developer knows, "I'm gonna be here on the 10th, I'm gonna be here on the 27th, and then it'll be done." Instead of, "I'm gonna be here on the 10th, and maybe on the 27th, I might have to show up and bring the whole dog and pony show and the crew and whoever, and maybe not, and so I gotta show up anyway, and," I mean, that part's dumb.
Right.
But you gotta remember, if you don't have call-up, and a process stops at planning commission, because there's a decision, then there is no such thing as call-up. The applicant has to appeal. That is a different, that is a different process than the call-up thing that we've been used to in the past.
Yeah, but we don't, yeah, but that, I mean, that's, you know.
What's different, though? You have to admit that.
Yeah.
True.
Okay, sure, I'll admit that.
It seems to me that, yes, that this probably ought to just be presented to the board. It doesn't feel like it's a discussion that should be had at this level.
Right, it's policy stuff.
If board, yeah, I mean, we're dealing with policy stuff right now, and if the board wants us to make the decision and eliminate call-up, to approve, to, then, then let them do that, and for us to make that decision right now, probably doesn't make sense. And I think there are benefits in, to both sides of it. As we get busy, the board's gonna be there till midnight, right? That's just the way it's gonna be. And so, if they recognize that, and they wanna put it on the people who they've made responsible for planning, then, then so be it, but whatever we say, it may go there and they, "Well, we don't want this."
Yeah, they may come back and say, "We wanna keep the call-up."
And our planners sitting there kinda saying, you know, "Some of these decisions probably ought to just be here," you know, I mean, so why not just take this, this stuff to the board, and they, "This isn't for us. This is, this is policy change, and there are a lot of things in here that we still have to do, but this is, this is policy change." And I don't even know that, that we have a recommendation, I, I can't come up with one, because I, I mean, I've decided to acquiesce to whatever you guys wanna do, but I think the board's gonna, they're gonna have to make this decision, not us. And I think that it would be better, I'm gonna take review and comment, it would be better to provide them the pros and cons of review and comment versus decision versus not having a call-up, so that they're educated and can make a good decision about it, so.
Yeah, but that's one sentence that covers every topic. We don't have to, we don't have to do the, the pros and cons of a lot-line adjustment, and then the pros and cons of a variance, and then the pros and cons of a major subdivision. I mean, we just have to say.
Yeah.
Either the planning commission makes the decision, or you make the decision. If you make the decision, you have to review all of it, and you'll be here till midnight. Okay?
Yeah. I mean, you'll have to become intimately familiar with the code and everything else. I mean, it's, it seems like they have an awful lot to do.
I know we're jumping ahead here a little bit with my question, but we just think we decided that whatever, whatever recommendation we make to the board ought to require a resolution of it, planning commission?
Sure, yes.
Right? So we're essentially voting on it anyway.
We are voting on it.
We're voting on what we're gonna say.
Right.
Okay. All right. Okay. So we're fine with this, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. All right?
I'm, I'm not, but, but okay.
Well, no.
If we're playing yays and nays, I mean, I'm fine with it.
As long as, as long as, when this goes, this goes before the board, they understand that we had that position on it, that it's not that we're saying, "Oh, this is the best way to do it," but what we're saying is, if this is the way you want to do it, we understand the process of why you want it to go down this road, and we'll accept that, basically, with some dissent.
I just feel that's kinda dysfunctional. I mean, I don't, I mean, this, these are policy decisions, just give it to them and let them make it. Just let them, let them hash it, let them sit here and figure it out, I mean, right? I mean, James is right, they, they make the decision, we make the decision, if you're gonna make the decision, you better be well-educated enough to make the decision. That's, that's the con, you've got more work to do, and you, you need to be more educated on, on
Right.
on the land use code. And then let them make the call. I mean, I.
Maybe they'll ask the question that was raised in the 90s when they changed it to where we are. Why didn't we redo that? And they'll find out they were here till midnight, and they might, "I don't wanna do that."
And at that point, I think my recommendation would be then give decision-making authority to the planning commission, still, I'll go back to the call-up idea, but the planning commission decision-making authority as opposed to.
Well, and I think that's, again, that's another decision the board should make. If the call-up provision is causing problems and confusion,
Right.
then stop it. Trust me, they'll be here. Board members will be here, they'll be paying attention, developers will be here, because decisions will be made here. And so, the, the, I mean, it will change, not policy decisions, the final, the, the, I mean, you set the decision here, and you require an appeal process, the dynamic of this meeting is, the dynamic of this commission is going to change, and board members will pay attention, they'll be, I bet you dollars to donuts, they'll be down here too, if they really care about this final plat, or on a minor or major, whatever the case may be. So, I, I think, again, making sure that the, the board is educated on what it means to do any one of these options is the smartest thing to do.
All right. Well, so that.
Well, before we move past this section real quick.
Yeah.
Do you wanna discuss major public improvement? I mean, I.
Okay, you should finish going through.
Oh, you wanna finish going through?
Well, you guys are halfway through, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we were talking about SDP, right?
1.7.
All right. Site development plan amendment, minor amendment, call-up provision at the town board was removed, decision at staff level was, remains as it was. Site development plan amendment, major, review and comment was the change, was originally decision at planning commission, and call-up at town board was changed to decision. Plan development, sketch plan was removed completely. Final development plan, originally decision at planning commission was changed to review and comment, originally town board was call-up, and it was changed to decision with, with a public hearing. Final development plan minor amendment, call-up provision at the town board was removed. Major amendment for final development plan, originally decision at planning commission changed to review and comment, originally call-up at town board was changed to decision with public hearing. Originally, call-up at town board was changed to decision with public hearing. Plan develop, plan development amendment, minor, was removed completely. Any, any changes to plan development would have to now be review and comment at Planning Commission and decision at town board. So for plan development, there's no, no provision for a minor amendment. Under miscellaneous lot line adjustment, call-up provision at Planning Commission was removed. So decisions at staff, subdivision exemption, call-up provision at Planning Commission was removed, decision at staff level. No changes for comprehensive plan amendment annexation. Street or alley vacation, no change except for adding the word alley to the description. Trailer hookup was removed. No change for land service permit or building permit. Major public improvements, change, review and comment at Planning Commission was deleted.
Should I bring it up?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, that seems silly. It's, yeah, I mean, the plan, any major public improvement should be coming before the Planning Commission, right?
We will change that back.
So Matt, if, if, if you guys, so I know there's a discussion of a ball field being discussed at the Town Night by some folks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't want to get into that.
Right.
It's more of a, just a question of, of, what is that? Is that a minor public improvement or a major public improvement? What, what is that?
Well, we, we've struggled with what the definition of a major public improvement is.
Yeah, so I'm, I want to, I want to hear what that, what that is. Because I'm, if it's in the Planning Commission, where does that, where would that fall? I mean, that, at this point. And who decides that it's one of these things? Or is it none of them?
We have a, there's a new definition of major public improvement, so that may be a good place to start.
Yeah, you want to read that?
Sure. Major public improvements are defined as those projects with significant impact that shall be located within public right-of-way, including streetscapes and interchange designs, buildings on public land or public easements such as maintenance buildings and parking structures and park and recreation facility site plans.
Would that be a park and recreation facility site plan?
Yes.
Okay.
And specifically, it excluded, you could have a very high-dollar public improvement, which is a, like the urban drainage project, right? It's going through a rock creek. It's a, you know, it's not something that Planning Commission, from a dollar threshold, it might meet that, but are we going to review it? Are we going to add value to that particular thing? Most, I don't know.
Oh, and another-
Hard to say whether we would or not.
You're saying that's a minor?
I'm just saying it's, from a cost standpoint, it might be a major public improvement in that it's a large expenditure, but it's very-
It's not changing this go-
It's not changing the landscape or the function of what people, people in the community use, right? Like a park.
What do you, I mean, what's your point?
Under that definition-
My point is that, that, that it wasn't, it's not in, it's not listed in the definition she just read.
Okay.
That was my point.
Okay.
Right? It's a, it's a, like a civil improvement, right? It's a civil engineering improvement. Doesn't, it's not necessarily something that we care about, I guess, is the, you know, we don't bring the engineering expertise to, to the table for it. I guess aesthetically, something could be affected by it.
Well, another example is like new centrifuge at the wastewater treatment plant.
Right.
Five, half a million dollars, but, under that definition, I would say it probably doesn't fall under major public improvement. For review of the Planning Commission at town board.
And if I can make sort of a further suggestion, I think that the line in this chart that says minor public improvement should come out. I mean, I don't, a minor public improvement being decided by staff, I, I think a major public improvement, we leave it, so a major public improvement, you know, comes, gets reviewed and commented, gets to the board for a decision. But, I mean, there are so many, there are committees and there are many people involved in making decisions on public improvements, but the idea that it would be in this chart, I don't know that that's appropriate. I mean, it goes, you know, maybe it's OSAC, maybe it's Pro-Test.
Well, but there, someone's got to be accountable for it, right?
Right, but it's not part of the land development code. I mean, this is a, this is public property generally, I mean, the board will eventually decide any public improvements on any right-of-way, honestly. I mean, they will, unless it's within the town manager's budgetary authority, it's going to go to the board. So, it's not quite accurate to put it as decision at staff level because staff is not going to make a decision if there's money being, if there's town money being spent.
If there's an expenditure, right.
They're not going to make a decision. So I, I don't know that that's quite accurate. I would just suggest taking that line out and leaving major improvement, major public improvement in there to make sure that we outline the process and so that somebody knows that the Planning Commission is going to get review and comment and the board is going to make a decision. But the mi, I don't, I don't think that is accurate, which I just noticed now, but that would be my recommendation to take that out.
Well, so here's, here's an example, okay? And I'll throw it out there. Nobody's going to like it, but I'll throw it out there. And that was the, the, you know, the sign out here in front of town hall.
Right.
Never, never came in front of the Planning Commission and yet we've reviewed signs of equal size in town because they're in the public right-of-way or whatever. And I think we could have had an impact on its aesthetics and its, you know, I don't know. I mean, so-
That's the best-looking sign I've ever seen. What are you talking about?
Let me tell you, I, you know-
I, I just throw it out there as an example of something that's a public improvement.
Right.
How dare you.
I've never, I'll just be, to be honest with you, I've never seen a Planning Commission comment on any public improvement, major or minor, ever. It's, no, not in any other town that I've been back.
Well, what about the roundabout?
Because it's not really a land use, traditionally, land use codes apply to private property.
Right.
When the town is making a decision on the town's own property, it's the board that does it. They're the elected officials, they control the money, they do it. Now, I mean, I think it's great that they're asking for review and comment on major ones, but it's, it's very unusual, that's all. So-
That's interesting because, like we said before, we would never, there's not a, there's not a private landowner in town that would be allowed to have anything like this.
Right.
And from a planning standpoint, allowing down-
There's a good reason for it. Oh, I'm sorry, what?
From a planning standpoint, whatever it is, I mean, we, we shouldn't be doing what we don't allow.
Others to do.
We should seriously just, just think about whether we're going to do something that we wouldn't allow a private property owner to do in town. And, I mean, that, and, I mean, if we're violating what we're telling everybody else to, you know, if we're, if we're violating-
It's a pretty big policy decision that the board-
Yeah. Oh, no, I agree, that's a board thing.
I, I know where you're going and I think that's a big policy decision and that's one that a lot of me is probably struggling with, is should we be doing on our property what we don't let others do on theirs? So.
I think most of the community would say yes.
I mean, just, just for information, we, we commented on the bridge for the RTD. We commented on the intersection improvements. We commented on the roundabouts.
Right.
It, it, it's a median design.
Yeah.
Well, don't blame that on us.
And that's-
Well, comment on that.
I know, just kidding.
And that all circulates on the aesthetics, basically.
It does. Yeah.
I actually don't think it's a bad idea, but I did, it's unusual to see, and the whole idea that minor improvement, that, that's just not an accurate reflection of what happens with the minor public improvement. So, that would be my recommendation, that we strike that out of the table.
Right. I don't disagree on that, so.
Do you ever agree with anything? Or do you just not disagree?
I don't, I'm not, I'm always not disagreeing. Always. It's not my purview to agree. Okay. Are we okay with that? Taking that one out?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Bob?
I'm not sure. I, you've got enough people saying sure.
That gets back to definition of major versus minor.
Yeah, I haven't heard the definition of minor, but-
There is no definition of minor because basically, minor is anything that's not major and that's why I want to take it out of the chart. It doesn't make any sense.
Gotcha.
Right.
Well, yes, and I would agree if there's no definition.
And staff's not going to make the decision because it has money and, which means the board's going to make the decision.
Minor public improvements don't exist by definition, then yes, by all means.
Minor could be anything.
Yeah, minor really could be anything. It could be a streetlight.
Yeah.
One single streetlight.
Changing a bulb.
It seems sort of silly.
It would be more appropriate to make sure that, that things we care about fall to a major.
Right.
Right, okay.
Okay.
All right. I'm glad we cleared that up.
Yeah.
I don't disagree.
Okay?
Historic designation, call-up at board was just simply changed to decision.
And I have an issue with that one because in the-
That's the way it reads, I, I read it.
Is it?
Yep.
Decision by the board?
Yep.
Even though the Planning Commission is-
Says, proceed your commission review after receipt of staff recommendation, the commission shall review and comment on applications for designation of historic sites and shall forward their recommendations to the Board of Trustees.
Okay.
And the Board of Trustees is actually the, or it's the Planning Commission, the historical reviewer? What's, what's the-
That's what he just read.
The Planning Commission is designated as the Historic Designation Commission.
But we shouldn't make decisions about it.
No.
We should just not disagree.
God forbid. We should, we should not disagree.
Right. As we move things forward.
Right.
We're not-
If, if it's already written that way, then-
There's a lot. We can-
Leave it. It's not going to what?
There's not going to be much of that.
I, I don't remember any historic thing ever coming before us, ever. We built, we put a mine camp house here and I don't know if we ever even really looked at that, did we?
Nope. The other part is now built around it.
Around it, right. Major public improvement.
I don't know if I'd call that an improvement.
All right, we're not going to get into the definition of improvement. Okay. Okay?
Appeal of the Planning Commission was removed and simply moved down to Board of Adjustments under general appeal.
Yeah, that's where it should be.
Right.
So any appeal?
Right, any appeal is, exactly.
Who's the Board of Adjustments again?
Town Board.
Town Board.
Okay, just checking.
You used to be on the Town Board, you shouldn't be surprised by that.
There were not Town Board members on the Board of Adjustments.
I know.
The reality is, if you want to be a Planning Commissioner and make decisions, you should just run the trustee. Yeah.
Absolutely. I know, so why are we even having this discussion? I don't understand this. It's now eight o'clock, we've been here for an hour, we've done nothing, we've accomplished nothing and we're going to go now through the rest of this document, line by line, all 100 and 200 pages of it?
No, we're not. We've already done that.
The speed will pick up.
Remember? We, we've whittled it down to this.
Right. Cool.
And of this, we've even whittled that down to the things that say-
50% of it.
That have, that have further discussion. Okay. So we've talked about 1.3, right?
We are down to page, on your list of items, we're on page two, Article Six, Zone Districts, which is Schedule of Uses, Section 166120.
See, look how much we've done there.
We moved right to six.
Wow.
Article six.
Commercial, the use of fast food and drive-in restaurants for the B.C. district has been changed from special use to prohibited. Getting rid of fast food, drive-in restaurants for the B.C. district?
The most important thing is let's identify B.C. districts in town again. Was it this, there's zoning over here that's B.C., right?
Right, on the corner.
That's like the only, or is there another one?
The Parks Recreation Office sits the Conoco and the residence next to it and the rep house right across the street are-
The only B.C., right?
Those are the only B.C.s. And will likely ever be the only B.C.s. I mean, nobody would go without zoning over there.
Unless something's rezoned in original town.
What's that?
Unless something's rezoned in original town, but everything else would be a-
So it would be, it's basically original town that's affected. And I think the request was putting fast food restaurants next to homes in original town would be-
Bad idea. We'd put gas stations next to them.
Dude, it'd smell good.
Well, it would. Depends on what it is.
Yeah, it's true.
And a matter of opinion, yes. Okay.
Okay, so that works great. Let's, let's leave that alone. Call that a no further discussion.
Under industrial use, which is number four on your list, the use of sexually oriented businesses would change from special use to prohibited in the light industrial zone district.
So there was one-
And there's the only one? Is there one piece of property?
A high zone, high industrial.
And there's only one piece of property?
No, we don't have any.
We don't have any.
We don't have any.
It's got to be in a light industrial.
Nobody's going to sue anybody about that, it'll be okay.
Okay, as long as I'm on record saying there has to be one single property in town-
There it goes.
Currently existing where there can be sexually oriented business under the First Amendment and under all the United States Supreme Court cases.
Oh, come on!
Let me-
What?
Now we're bringing the Supreme Court into it again.
Come out here with your Constitution. Golly! This is a-
So, right, so there's no IL, right?
No. There are.
It's a zone district, but there is no physical space in the town that is zone-
But is, is sexually oriented business allowed in?
HI.
HI?
There, there are no high industrial zone properties in town.
But that's where you can have a sexually oriented business.
But, but there is an IL now.
There is.
And sexually, and sexually oriented businesses are permitted in IL now.
Correct.
So we would be removing, so this is a discussion that we had before, is we would be taking somebody's existing right to have a sexually oriented business. Not that I want one where there is, but we'd be taking away their right, correct?
Okay, correct. It's a special use.
So it's a special use now.
And there's criteria that they have to meet.
It can't be within five hundred miles of a school.
Yeah. But if you prohibit it.
Distance requirement.
Are we allowed to do that?
No.
Okay.
So they'd be grandfathered in, even if, so if we change this, would they be grandfathered?
No, nobody's grandfathered in unless the business is already open.
Okay.
As far as we know, that hasn't happened, so.
So I'm not following the yeses and nos to my questions?
The, the point is that we can't really change this.
Right, exactly.
Thank you.
Okay.
So the decision has been made for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Whose idea was it to change that?
So this can't be changed, right?
Exactly, right. This may have been something that we changed on paper, not understanding that there was no property that was actually zoned high industrial because it looked good on paper until we actually looked to see that there was nothing zoning.
Right, alright, so we have to leave I.L. as the zone district that permits.
And it's by special use.
By special use.
Only by special use.
Right, it's, they're not just, they can't walk in the door, they would have to come in and get special use permit, but.
And the, the change at the time was with the thought of protecting the existing residences in original town.
Yeah, and I'd be all for that if we were allowed to do it.
No sexually oriented business within a thousand miles of original town.
I mean, I, you know, I'm all, I'm all with you in for it, for it, Matt, but I, I just, we, we can't, just because it's sexually oriented, it doesn't mean we can do anything different than anything else, so we gotta do what's right, so that's, that's what I'm, alright.
Number five. This is Schedule of Requirements we've moved on to now. Residential districts, the maximum building height in the medium density residential zone district was changed from thirty-two feet to thirty-five.
So that, that's done, right?
No.
No.
The only change that was made.
Was setbacks, right?
Was block coverage.
Block coverage, right.
We didn't change the building height.
We did not change the building.
Oh.
So where, so where did we come up with this number? And, I mean, it was kind of.
That's exactly the same question you asked when we decided to pull this.
Oh, that's.
Where did that, where did that height come from?
Well, it comes from, basically, you have a multi-family development that's like two stories. Thirty-five feet is a more reasonable number than thirty-two. There's only three more feet, but it has to do with, with the floors. Now, in a house, you can get the roof down a little farther on a single family, even though it's two stories, but multi-family is a little bit different.
Right.
That's all.
So is.
I don't know, maybe.
And we got some properties zoned medium density residential in original town.
Yeah.
So is this medium density or is this multi?
No, it's medium density, that's zone district, which is the multi-family.
Just that corner's light industrial.
Was there a discussion on that time as to where we measured the height from?
Yes.
Was that determined?
It was defined, I think.
That's, that's on like page twelve.
Fred's decision changes it to that.
So, so I'm still confused though, is this, this would apply also for single family, medium?
If you're in the.
Medium density, right.
If you're in the medium density district, if you had to build a single family house there, your height zone would be thirty-five feet.
But what, I mean, I'm in a medium density and our heights come out at about twenty-eight.
Yeah, you're in a P.D.
Right.
You're in a planned development, so you have different.
Have your own.
Yeah, you're.
Criteria.
Once you move to a planned development, all bets on the code are off anyway. You negotiate the, you negotiate the requirements based on, you know, how much cash you got.
So a question, light, so that we do have some light industrial zoning and it was my understanding that they have multi-family used by, that they can put in multi-family used by right, am I incorrect?
Yeah, the, that block you're talking about is.
The block along fourth, between fourth and fifth?
Yeah, the corner lots, or lot, I think there's more than one, is light industrial, but then the properties to the south are medium density.
Okay.
So you could have your sexually oriented business next to the brothel.
So can the light industrial zoning have multi, have medium density residential, or would the zoning have to be changed?
They'd have to rezone that property.
That would have to be rezoned?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the junkyard, is that the whole thing there?
That's exactly, we can't, we can't rezone our only light industrial property, yeah.
There is more than one.
Well, that's, yeah, what does happen if they come and wanna rezone that? If that's our only one?
It's not.
It's not one.
There is, oh, there is one more, okay.
Then we'd have to open up another zone district to the S.O.P.'s.
Gotcha.
Right.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
So I'm still failing to understand this one, though. It, it, it's medium density, it can be single family or multi-family.
But the height limit is changing.
Two, three.
Based on what? I mean, now we, now we're saying.
Fred just said why, 'cause it's better.
Better.
When you build, you need so much room for one floor, so much room for that next floor, so much.
And then you gotta put a roof on.
Pitch of a roof.
You got plenty of areas you have to do.
Three feet makes a difference. But they're not.
How, but how is that different than, I live in a home, I live in a development where we typically peak out at twenty-eight, this allows fully four feet more. All I'm saying is, once you creep it up, then, then that becomes like a new norm, based on what?
So your point is that during a, during a, during a P.D., we go here, this is where we go first, right?
Yeah.
What, what is it now? And what percentage, and, and what's gonna be okay to bump it up another five? What, what the heck, we'll bump it up another five, so we're bumping up another five, thirty-five, forty?
Now you're up to thirty-seven.
There, we're there, right, so, and I, and I, you brought this up before too, and I, and those, those, those homes have full blown two stories with addicts even, I think.
Yes, we have addicts.
At twenty-eight feet.
I'll see, ten, twenty.
So why do we need, why, yeah, I would, I would think I'm right there with you, why do we need to go to thirty-five?
Well.
If, if we've got these home, I mean.
We don't, we don't need to go to thirty-five.
Okay. I mean, if a P.D. needs to go to thirty-five to fit the product in, then they're gonna ask for it, and we're gonna decide whether to do it, and they would need to go to forty to get the product, then they're gonna ask for it, and the town will decide whether they, they wanna do it.
Yeah, there's always the, the ability for variance.
So why don't we just say, Rochelle, we recommend thirty, let's keep it at thirty-two feet and see if everybody nods their head and move on?
Exactly.
Okay, everybody's nodding their head.
Well. Blake made a comment.
Go ahead.
So, properties with medium density residential in original town don't necessarily have to do a site development plan. If they can meet, if they're a duplex, for instance, and they can meet their setbacks requirements, they can just apply for a building permit.
Right, and they can do it meeting the thirty-two foot height requirement.
Or common ask for variance.
Or ask for variance.
I mean, we have, I mean, yeah, bathrooms, that's plenty of room to do.
Well, I think what Fred was getting at, though, is that when you're building a multi-family structure, it's different than building a single family structure, because you've got more assemblies between the floor, you have more.
But, but we lump, we lump them together, so if they can come in and if it's truly multi-family and they can show and establish why they need it bumped up, that's different than single family, which also can come under R.M. That can, I, I just don't see a reason to, to start bumping it up for no reason, and in the cases where it is multi-family, then they can come and present their plan, and if they.
But I think, I think the point is that they, they shouldn't have to come in for, they, they should be able to do certain things by right.
Well, then why don't we just, then why don't we just take all these numbers off, make it fifty?
Their right is thirty-two feet.
Right, their right.
But I.
I mean, the, the, I think the, just, the, the point is that the thirty-two foot or the thirty-five foot is, is an arbitrary number unless some, and I know, I know what you're saying about assemblies and, you know, things like that, even to sell a product that has ten-foot ceilings instead of eight-foot ceilings or nine-foot ceilings or something, right? We, we, you can't, you can't craft the code to meet whatever contingency you want, you just.
I mean, I'd like to hear about it, if they wanna put the cathedral ceilings on the second floor, I mean, then let them come down and ask.
Change that map?
We have a provision to allow them to ask.
Okay. I mean, I'm, we, happily take a little straw poll here and see what everyone thinks.
Maybe it's be seventeen feet.
Your choices are thirty-two or thirty-five.
Right.
So, if you wanna keep it at thirty-two, raise your hand.
It just.
If you wanna change it to thirty-five?
Then you split.
Alright, just split.
I, well, again, this is gonna impact most likely original town. We've already had things come up where I believe there are gonna be issues on view corridors and things like this, and this is just gonna exacerbate those issues. I see no, because we know where this is gonna go, this is gonna be largely around original town and it will affect.
All the residences that are planned in town center are different.
That'd be a P.D. too.
Yeah.
So that's gonna be a P.D.
But you're still, you're giving guidelines that you're saying.
And I'd like, I would, I mean, I'd like if we're going into a P.D. to have thirty-two sitting here, so that's our preferred height limit, and we're not gonna bump it from thirty-five to forty, we might go thirty-two to thirty-five, it's just, I mean, why, why not keep us down low, and if we need to go higher, then so be it, but.
It just involves more of the process again, is what you're saying.
Oh, remember.
What's the negotiation thing, I mean?
The effort, the effort at this whole thing is to streamline the development process, a variance on top of.
Not asking about a variance, we're talking about a P.D. coming in and what our recommended height limit is right now, and what we're gonna negotiate up from, and so rather than negotiating up from thirty-five, why not we just stay at thirty-two and negotiate up? I mean, from thirty-two, rather than, I mean, I, I don't know, it just, it just seems, I mean, heights are a big deal, they're a big deal, I mean, you go into Boulder, dear God, you know, heights, I mean, inches come into play in Boulder. Buildings have been condemned because they were inches out of, out of.
Yeah, unless you're the university.
So, yeah, but.
Did anyone change their mind? Thirty-two to thirty-five?
I've got thirty-three and a half that kind of.
Alright, I'd say we, let's leave it at thirty-two.
Okay.
The chair's prerogative there.
Right.
Right? So, okay.
Uh, let's see.
Let's do rock, paper, scissors.
Okay. I don't disagree.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, we're moving to number eight on page three, accessory uses. The reference to home occupation was deleted because a home occupation must be in the primary residence.
Six one three, what, what page is that on?
It's page fifty-three of the revised code. You got fifty-one?
Is this the only home occupation piece that's on our list?
Mm-hmm.
I think one of the, I mean, I, I think I may have commented on this, I don't know if it really had directly to do with the, this accessory uses line, but. I mean, I know there are a number of home occupations that are prohibited that have been going on in this town for a very long time, but. I think that was my only, you know.
How come I don't know what a home occupation is? Oh, a home, like a home business.
Home business.
Right, right.
Shops.
You wouldn't wanna call it that, though, 'cause that would be.
It wouldn't be an occupation.
We can, if you want.
It'd be an occupational hazard.
Okay, so, I know we.
A home occupation sounds like somebody living in the house.
Right, yeah, so.
What the hell? It's a home business.
Home business.
So what, I don't recall exactly why we pulled this.
Yeah, I can't remember either.
Other than, unless we wanted to talk about this particular change, is this the only thing that was changed in the code?
You can't have accessory use in your, at a home occupation housing your accessory use, which could be a detached garage.
So you, you can't.
You can't have a home occupation in a detached garage.
Your home business.
Oh, that's why, that's why we wanted to talk about it.
That's why.
Being the actual living dwelling residence, not a, not a side.
So now you're dealing with original town in Rock Creek again, aren't we?
Yep.
Yeah, so.
You can't have a mechanic's.
Yeah, if your, if your garage is attached to your house, no worries, dude.
Right.
Come on up the hill. No kidding.
Okay, I recommend we scratch that.
Yeah, that's really.
I mean, is there a legal reason, or is that just our code? I mean, is there some?
Well, no, because.
What would be the reason not to allow?
The likelihood is you won't run a large rendering plant in a, in a, a piece of, of attached structure, but you might run it in a detached structure since you won't have to deal with the smell and the noise.
Yeah, but you're gonna stand in your backyard to hot, to house your accessory.
Right, that's another thing.
Your hazardous chemicals.
Right.
Your meth.
But you don't allow that stuff. But you don't allow that stuff.
Your shop smith is the most.
It's not allowed as a home occupation anyway.
Yeah, we restrict what home occupations are, so why does it matter where you have them?
We're restricting where you do it, right, on your own.
Because you can't have any, basically outside effects, if anybody sees that you're doing it, then it can't, I mean, that's my general recollection of your rights on home occupations, if anybody can tell that you're doing it, you can't do it, so.
Otherwise, you just have.
Noise, traffic.
It's a handyman business.
If you're cutting, if you're cutting air inside your house and you have an occasional car pull up and.
We have handyman businesses openly operating, you know.
According to this, you can't cut it.
Right there on the, on the driveways, I mean.
So.
Yeah, we're already restricting.
You send us the address.
What's the, as the current code says, is that, is this what it says today?
Home occupation police.
No, it's in there, that you could, in accessory uses is allowed.
Is allowed?
Uh-huh.
So, oh, so it is, it's okay now? Why was the recommendation, and who, okay, where the recommendation to take that away come from?
From an attorney.
Doesn't it capture the definition of home occupation to have it outside of a, yeah, but the problem is that we have the next section which specifically says a home occupation shall be allowed as an accessory use. So, I don't.
So is that.
I mean, we're truly talking about how a property has been, a residential property's been built, and you've got homes here who have a lot of detached garages.
Right.
So I would recommend.
A lot of businesses going on over here.
If you wanna, if the planning commission wants to lead us in, we'll clean up the language to make sure that.
I kinda wanna go a step farther and make sure we're.
Hey, hang on one second, if, if you're going to speak at the public hearing, you need to come to the microphone. Okay.
Aren't you an attorney?
Yeah, I think this needs a little bit of a rewrite, honestly.
Let's just dump the part about you can't do it in a detached garage.
Why can't we just leave the language as is and move on?
Well, we're gonna talk about, we have to change sixteen six one thirty, which is the next section, so paragraph one, because it says the U shall be conducted entirely within dwelling. That's where we get the problem of, it's either in the dwelling, which is the main building, or it's in an accessory structure, but.
Or you could define the dwelling as the entire piece of property. And then you could call it on the property.
I'll just, I think you should say that you should be conducted entirely within a building, I mean, so that it's not outside, because, right, that's one of the criteria usually, is that you don't want the business being conducted outside.
Inside of a building on your property.
Fixing cars on your driveway, you don't want that, you want it in the garage.
What about roasting chili peppers? You can't do that in a building.
I'm not sure roasting chili peppers is allowed, let me see.
Fire roasted chili peppers. Now you're creating a whole.
But, so.
Anyway.
I, I'm, my, my opinion is I think we should just leave it as is, and if that means you just gotta modify the.
I'm just gonna modify the next section to remove dwelling and building.
So as relates to accessory use of buildings, buildings, I agree, I have another issue with home occupation use, but yes, I agree with you, let's leave it as is.
Leave it as is and.
Well, she's questioning, though, whether it is.
She's gonna change it, she's gonna change the definition of what a dwelling is.
You're gonna fix it so that.
I'm just gonna change the word dwelling to the word building now.
Must be in a building.
In a building, okay, alright.
So now what about home invasions?
So now home evasions. No, so I, so this just brought up another topic, which is home occupancy and what people are doing in their homes today, and are we gonna ignore it, are we gonna deal with it, are we gonna, I mean, are we just gonna move on, or, or, you know? It's, it's.
What are you talking about?
No, so what do you, what do you mean, I mean, as far as people doing work from their home?
Well, yeah, well, so there, there are, so, especially given the economy, it's probably increased dramatically, but even, even so, there are a lot of people who do a lot of things out of their home, and. It, I guess the question is, is it worth revisiting what we allow in a home occupation business? Are we okay with what the definition is of home occupation?
I am, because I think it's a policy decision.
Okay, that's totally fair enough.
Yeah, and you'd have to get down to some pretty nitty definitions of.
Doesn't fall under the purview of the Land Use Code.
Fair enough.
Per se.
But it's in the Land Use Code.
It is, it is, but it's, it's one of the, again.
But it's here.
You just made a, you know, an argument that it's a policy decision and.
No, and I agree, so this other stuff is in there too.
It's a policy decision whether to actually force it.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think of.
Just so I have this straight, we wanna allow access, we wanna allow home occupations to occur in accessory buildings?
Yeah.
Okay. Because we have another little problem, which is six, sixteen six one forty, subsection three says the total area used for a home occupation uses shall not exceed twenty-five percent of the total floor area within a dwelling unit. Are we going to then include the accessory building floor area within the total that we're taking the twenty-five percent out of?
I think you have to.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I don't think a person who has a detached garage should be penalized because of it.
Or an outbuilding, a number of people have an outbuildings.
So basically what I'm gonna do is change sixteen six one forty to be consistent with what you're telling me here, that, that home occupation should be allowed in the accessory building as well as in the main building.
As long as it's on your own property in a building.
Right.
In a building, yeah.
Exactly, okay, got it.
Either or.
Right, and the percentage could still apply, you're just taking.
Got it.
Number nine, home occupation, which, sections nine and eleven of the current code, sixteen one nineteen were combined under section nine of the revised code, but no significant changes to the language.
Which I think was your point, right, and I, we think we've decided to move on, yes.
Okay.
Is that fair, everyone? I don't wanna speak out.
Well, I mean, can I ask Fred, or ask these guys, I mean, is, is the definition of what a home occupation is, does that more, is that a policy decision that the board should deal with and we shouldn't address?
Well, I think it's standard part of, of a zoning code, so it should come under the purview of the planning commission to decide whether, or to suggest what it is. Because it's definitely embedded in the zoning.
But, but we're really looking at section nine, nine, right?
Right.
Correct.
We've consolidated it under section nine, and we're saying that you cannot have any retail or wholesale shop, barber shop, beauty parlor, wig styling, mortuary, nursing home, restaurant, veterinarian's clinic, wood shop, cabinet making shop, auto repair shop, motorized implement repair, dance, music, or other type of instruction, if more than four students being instructed at one time, dental offices, medical offices, the painting of vehicles, trailers or boats, radio and television repair, welding shops, sexually oriented businesses, and irrespective of whether the use may be categorized as a sexually oriented business, any retail or wholesale sales to consumers upon the premises, or any use not allowed in the zone district. This list is non-exclusive.
How would computer repair compare to radio and television repair? I'm just curious.
It's a good question.
Oh, what repair?
Computer repair.
Computer repair.
If you can watch YouTube on it, you can.
Well, you can't, you can't, you can't repair televisions and radios anymore, you throw them away when they break.
Right.
So, but we had a prohibition regarding those, is it because people were soldering printed circuit boards to repair them?
Because cathode tubes have lead in them, and when they break, they become hazardous waste.
Mercury.
Mercury, sorry, no, lead.
Okay.
I don't know why.
Just, just thought I'd ask, it just seemed like it was, it, it seemed to be a little time machine there, and maybe not discussing.
Put electronics.
Whether somebody had a computer repair shop, right.
Yeah, yeah.
Or just say electronics repair.
Yeah, we could.
Yeah, could we update that to electronics repair?
I mean, if we choose to do that, maybe.
Sorry, what are you updating?
We're, we're just suggesting that in lieu of the term radio and television repair, we update it to electronics repair. And the question is, is. And the question is whether that's a reasonable thing to do or not.
Yeah, I have a question about that as well as the wood shop and cabinet making, although I think they need to be defined. I mean, well, we do define it because it's restricted 25% of your dwelling, right? I mean, it's not like you can have this massive wood shop or.
Well, no, it's just been under no circumstances can you have a wood shop.
I know, that's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't agree with that. I'm sorry, I'm saying, I don't agree that not allowing a wood shop, I mean, unless there's some, I mean, I get welding because you're.
The issue is noise.
It's noise.
Okay, but we have noise.
Noise and staining and painting and those kinds of things, that's, that's the issue.
Well, we don't allow painting.
Spontaneous combustion.
Right, because if you're going to be a wood shop, you're going to finish the wood.
Systems are something else.
That's why it was, that's why it's prohibited.
Okay.
Fire department.
And radio and television repair again was because.
And there's a, right, there's, say that again, because I don't think I've ever heard.
The dust collection systems are for real fire hazard. They really are. Fire department, probably that.
So a radio and television repair is prohibited because it's obsolete and because there's all sorts of heavy.
Now you're going to change it to electronics so somebody can't repair laptops in their house?
No, well, that's, that's what we're saying is that.
You could repair laptop in your house.
As a coverage now.
As your major business space and have a lot of people come.
No, according to this, you can't do that.
If you change it to electronics.
That's like saying I couldn't be a realtor out of my house because I answer the phone once in a while in my house on a business call.
No, you can do that, that's allowed.
I know, but I'm saying, you can't, how do you monitor when a guy brings, says, oh, I'm going to work on this tonight and take it home.
I think, I mean, I think we scratch radio and TV repair because as James pointed out, nobody repairs them anymore. And we just leave electronics out of it because I think, I don't see that as a big hazard. And I do think a lot of people are probably doing it.
And a lot of people doing a lot of things in here.
Well, I mean, then you could go back to the millwork thing and people would argue a shop smith, for instance, is a perfectly justifiable piece of equipment.
You couldn't, you couldn't stop them from having a shop smith.
Right.
You can't. And they could build a chair and they could build a bench, they could build a cabinet.
If we're making exceptions, do we need to go through these one by one?
I would like, yes, I'm recommending we look at these and, and, I mean, that was my point. I felt like there were some things in here that I wanted to look at. I mean, I can be easily swayed, I mean, when you tell me that.
Or you set a standard.
Why we can't have wood shops now, that makes, that makes perfect sense.
Or you set a standard that says you can't have these things, basically, and it boils down to enforcement. If, if the town can prove that you're running it like a business through volume, through traffic, through complaints of neighbors, they can shut you down. But they're not going to shut you down because you happen to have a woodsmith in your garage and you build your ground shell, the stool.
Oh, exactly. But computer repair, I mean, so I, so my issue came down to the electronics got thrown out. And I'm not quite sure we put it, agreed to put it in here, but, I mean, people being able to repair computers in a house is not a big deal.
We just said drop it.
Right, okay, so we agreed to drop, we're going to drop radio and television and electronics?
We're talking about them all, I guess.
Yeah.
So, does anybody have any issue with retail or wholesale shop?
No.
No. Barber shop? There's reasons why. You have to be licensed, you got to clean, have to be clean and stuff. So we don't really want barber and beauty shop, right?
Yep.
Or wig styling. Mortuary, everybody good with not having a mortuary in your.
What's wrong with wig styling?
Hygiene. Hygiene.
It's a hygiene thing.
Okay, got it, okay.
Mortuary.
Oh, come on, we can let that happen. All right.
What about taxidermy? Can you do, it doesn't, taxidermy is not on here.
Yeah, we don't want to do taxidermy.
Taxidermy is not on here.
Nursing home, hang on, nursing home.
Got it.
Restaurant? No, right? Veterinarian's clinic? No, that's tax, that's like similar to taxidermy. Veterinarian's clinic.
No, that's way after they're dead. Veterinary would actually keep the taxidermist from being able to work.
Wood shop? We decided no.
Yep.
Cabinet making shop?
Same problem.
Same thing. Auto repair shop, right?
Great idea, firebird up on blocks.
Motorized implement repair?
You don't live in an original town, do you?
Motorized implement repair.
This is.
Well, it's like vacuum cleaners or lawn mowers.
Or blenders.
Yeah.
Motorized.
Anything motorized.
Right, or rewinding motors.
And what are the, okay, well, I guess, I mean, I could see lawn mowers being a problem, but, you know, if you're affection electric toothbrushes, it wouldn't really hurt anybody.
All right, fine, leaving it out, leaving it on the list.
I'm going to leave it on the list.
Yeah, we probably will. Okay.
It's funny, it says dance music or other type of instruction because it says above, under no circumstances, but yet you're saying if there's less than four students, it's still okay.
Is that clear? I mean, I think that's clear, but.
Well, in fact, wait, right, it would be dance music or other type of instruction with more than four students.
Yes.
Yeah, why not just write that?
Can you change that?
There you go.
And maybe get near the parentheses.
Yes.
With more than four students at one time.
It shouldn't be there.
We need to leave the at one time.
Right, at, yes.
Yeah, all right.
Dental offices?
Hygiene.
Medical offices?
Hygiene.
So, well, okay, so what about an acupuncturist or chiropractor? I know in Boulder, I went to an acupuncturist in her home.
Or a certified massage therapist.
Or a massage therapist.
We added massage therapists, didn't we?
Well, it's under sexually oriented business.
No, 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 not that kind of massage therapist. No happy ending. Okay, let's stay on task here.
So does, does acupuncture chiropractic and or massage fall under medical office?
No.
I'm not asking you.
I don't know.
I'm an attorney.
That's, I don't know.
I think, let the, I don't know.
I don't know the answer. I mean, if you want to specifically keep those out, then I would list them.
No, I don't, I think I want to make sure we're not excluding them by listing medical office. My, my point is I want to make sure we're not.
I think you leave it again and then if it's a nuisance, they could be shut down out of their home if they're operating in a way that creates.
Well, any of these businesses could be.
It's not just, it's not just a nuisance. I mean, this gives a, you know, this gives a ticked off neighbor a legal mechanism.
Well.
I mean, whatever, it could be because they're just upset with them and don't like the guy. And I mean, if they're doing something legal and medical offices includes massage and it's not affecting anybody, then.
But a medical office doesn't have a medical license, right?
Medical office doesn't have a medical.
What about medical dispensaries?
Yeah, that's what I, that's why I said I don't know the answer. Because right now with medical marijuana, the word medical has taken on an entirely new meaning. So normally, if you had asked me this a year ago, I would have said medical does not include non-licensed, you know, licensed as a medicine, a medical doctor, but this year.
But massage therapists, chiropractors and acupuncturists are licensed.
Not as medical doctors.
Not as medical doctors.
Right, as practitioners.
But this medical has taken on a whole new meaning, so.
So is this worth some effort on our town's part to make sure that we?
Well, I think we're going through, you're waiting for some statute, something to get figured out, right?
Yesterday, they're still changing the legislation.
Well, I would recommend expanding it beyond medical marijuana just to make sure that we're not.
I was just using that as an example.
Understand.
Yeah, so.
But you couldn't answer my question because of that issue, so I'd like to ask that.
Maybe we add medical marijuana dispensaries.
I don't care about medical marijuana dispensaries.
Can we leave this as is until such time as we discuss the medical marijuana issue?
Yeah, I wouldn't throw that.
And then specifically address this, though? Can you write a note or put a sticky on the board?
That's exactly what I'm asking is can we make sure that we address this later?
We address this at that time because your point is what I get.
Thank you, that's my, that's all of it. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, all right. Are we okay with that?
Good.
Okay.
It never would have crossed my mind to include an acupuncturist, chiropractor or a massage therapist as a medical practitioner. Well, maybe, maybe a, maybe a chiropractor.
Whatever.
Because they can write prescriptions.
No, they can't.
If they're chiropractor.
Not if they only have a chiropractor.
Yeah, they can, yeah.
Oh, that's a osteopath, right, a D O. He's not a chiropractor.
And there's nutritionist, there's. Okay.
Those aren't, they're not licensed medical people.
Okay, moving on, the painting of vehicles?
You couldn't answer my question.
I know.
Right?
Yep.
Okay, trailers? Painting of vehicles, trailers or boats, not.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
We, we're scratching radio and television repair?
Leave that off.
Okay.
Or do we want to keep that on there? I mean, I know you're saying it doesn't. I've got a couple old TVs that I still use.
You fix them?
There probably are some people that still.
Wouldn't you like it if somebody would fix them?
There's Sony's that last forever, man.
I think we, are we deciding to scratch it? Raise your hand.
We're going to Precisader Museum.
Was there a reason to?
We're going to Precisader Museum.
Was there any, is it, could somebody who's doing radio and television repair have any equipment that's going to cause problems?
Just heavy metals in the tubes, that's the only.
Yeah, I'm okay. I'd say scratch it.
Not just in an eyesore, there's a place in Boulder I can find you.
We're going to scratch radio and television repair, okay? Welding shops? SOBs?
I'm going to take that in.
Jim, that's sexually oriented businesses, okay? And irrespective of whether the use may be categorized as SOB, any retail or wholesale sales to consumers upon premises or any use not allowed in the zone district. This list is non-exclusive.
So does that say that if a massage therapist is allowed, which we'll find out later, and they sell oils or an acupuncturist sells, or a nutritionist sells nutritional items or Mary Kay sells?
Technically, you're not supposed to retail out of your house.
Yes.
So Mary Kay is not allowed to do Mary Kay out of your house.
Exactly.
No, but Mary Kay is come look at my stuff, place an order and it'll be shipped to you.
No, I'm going to bring it to your house.
They'll bring it to your house, too.
Which means you're operating a business in their house, not in your house.
Yeah.
You're just trying to keep traffic, you know, somebody across the street from you constantly having three cars in front of their house.
That's the issue.
Nobody wants that.
Here's one, I want that.
What if they're really cool cars?
Are we good?
So, just say it for the record and then I'll say we're good, but I think that by simply, there are home-based businesses that the, that this impacts, that doesn't make sense in my mind. And for somebody not to be allowed to do a Mary Kay or any of the other.
Where do you draw the line?
Yeah, where do you draw the line?
Cigar shop.
I'm suggesting we talk about it and we figure out where you drew a line. You drew a line right here and said, no, nothing. You've drawn a line, I'm suggesting we talk about it and make it possible.
But then it comes to enforcement, though. Again, I mean, you know, I could run a cigar, put a humidor in my basement and run a cigar shop and have guys coming in and out of my house all the time buying cigars.
And you got to knock that off, by the way.
And brew a beer in your basement.
Okay, so I made my point, I said drop it, we're gone.
Are you good?
No, but don't drop it. I mean, I, I, I know, no, I think it's not correct, but I'm willing to let it go for right now and there's enough people here on the, yeah, I shouldn't disagree with me that.
There's always an opportunity to.
Okay, not to make this harder than it seems to me, but the last, my question here is, is the last sentence swallow the rest of it or any use not allowed in the zone district? A home occupation is in the residential zone district. By definition, any commercial activity is not permitted in a residence. I mean, I think that last phrase swallows everything, right? I'm selling Mary Kay, but I'm doing it, you know, I'm selling Mary Kay, but I'm having it shipped directly to each owner so that I'm not violating those, right? But commercial sales aren't allowed in residential zone districts, it's a residential zone district. So I think that that last phrase swallows everything, makes all home occupations illegal.
Right, I agree.
So you're saying we should take it out?
Yes.
I, I don't disagree.
As an unequivocal.
Well, he's done.
As an unequivocal waffle, that's, that's what you should take that as.
And so this list is non-exclusive, meaning?
That doesn't mean anything either, I think that should come out.
I was going to ask about that.
Yes.
I mean, we can say whatever we want.
I think what they meant to say was this is not an exhaustive list.
Or if we feel like it should.
It is exhaustive.
It is exhaustive.
We've identified what you can do.
I know, it's both of those things, but I think that's what the intent of that sentence was to say it's not exhaustive, not, not exclusive. Sometimes we get ahead of our vocabulary.
It could be a farrier in town, right? In fact, we may have a farrier, we have a farrier, don't we? But I don't know if he actually does work in town.
Oh yeah, don't you see that line of horse trailers every morning up El Dorado?
But you'd have to do the work inside the house, you gotta bring the horse in.
In the middle.
Right.
Got the feed trough right there by the fireplace, it's cold.
Okay, so we are done with item nine.
Article seven, rezoning, zoning amendments, item one. This is from this section, I don't list it here, but the language specifying the specific timeframe of when a request must be reviewed was deleted, which allows greater flexibility for the town to review requests either sooner or later. And that is.
Well, the reason I think we, as I recall that we talked about this, was we also didn't want the town sitting on something forever. And if you, if you don't define something, then theoretically the town could just choose not to act on it.
Right, so we can handle the sooner part by saying, the timeframe is up to 75 days, not within 45 to 75 days, but up to, and that way it could be three days if you get around to it that quickly. And then 75 days leaves the, you can't sit on it forever.
That's two and a half months, right, 75 days.
We wanna say 75 days, that's the maximum?
Up to 75, yeah, the town can take up to 75 days to review a something.
Is that a, Phyllis, I mean, do you think that's a reasonable period of time? I know, but you publish notices and all that stuff, I mean.
The requirements for publishing are no more than 30, but no less than 70, so 75 days to get it, to get.
I mean, it's a reasonable number, I guess, right?
Could I clarify, do we want 75 days till it goes to the Plan, for the planning commission hearing? Or 75 days, I mean, it's.
What does the article seven read? The language 16, what?
16-7-30 reads, the planning commission shall conduct a public hearing on post amendment ordinance, right? That's where I would suggest that we contain the time limitation, because once it's out of your hands, it can be continued by the board, it can be, so I don't like to ever put a final decision deadline, but instead a first decision deadline.
Okay.
Because then it will go through the regular course, you know, it will be then referred to the board of trustees, as opposed to, so I would say 75 days to conduct the initial public hearing, and then that is.
And that, and my point was only about that, I just didn't want it to be infinite.
I agree.
Okay.
Next, article eight subdivisions, item one. This is under the revised code, section 16-820 subsection C2. The timeframe was 15 days, or is 15 days in the current code, to review exemption applications. This was removed to allow greater flexibility, the PC's direction was to revise the language regarding the number of days and add it back in, which staff did, with that 30 days.
Thanks.
So, it was the same idea?
Same idea.
Yeah.
Okay, we like 30 days, right?
Yep.
Love it.
Awesome. Go with it.
All right. Item two, revised code, section 16-840 subsection A and 16-850 subsection A.
These are kinda rendered moot by the discussion we had earlier, aren't they?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's let that go next.
Yep, we've already decided this, basically, right?
Yeah. So, moving on to article 10, plan developments, item one. Revised code, section 16-1030 subsection C. This lists the approval procedures for a planned development, these have been clarified.
We've done that, too.
We do.
Section 16-1050. This section's been revised to eliminate unnecessary language and references the thresholds to trigger a formal review listed in section 16-290. This has to do with the whole issue about minor amendments and what triggers them. That language was revised by Kendra.
Why'd we have it on there?
I think it had to do with the whole minor amendment, what, what triggers it not being a minor amendment. So, we just wanted to make sure.
At what point can staff no longer look at it?
Right, which is clarified in 16-290.
I got nothing. Anybody, is this bothering anyone?
I just seem like there was something in this list, but.
Under section 16-290, the language was revised to basically state that the manager may approve minor deviations from approved permits and development plans issued by the board of trustees, planning commission, or manager. Manager shall notify the board of trustees of approved minor deviations. A deviation is not minor if it's
This is the one that had really confusing language.
So, basically, if it, if any of items one through 14 apply, then it's not a minor amendment.
Right.
That's how the language was revised.
Right, because before it looked like you could almost deviate on everything and still be minor.
Right.
Right, right, okay.
So, if any of the 14 happen, it's not minor.
Yeah, we changed this, right, from any, from all to any, or something, right?
Right, and we changed eight to significantly alter the drainage plan.
I'm good.
We tried to clean up the language.
Okay.
I'm good. Everybody good?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to article 11, which is on page 79 of the revised code.
I'm surprised you people have to wait for Matt to tell you where all this stuff is. You don't have this commended to memory yet?
Supplemental procedures for a site development plan can be found under current code, section 16-503. Language has been, language referencing the thresholds listed in 16-290 of the revised code.
That's what we just looked at, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Right.
So, it's just same as the other.
Hey, why do we still have 16-1140, which is at the bottom of, under supplemental requirements, and why are we still talking about sketch plans?
Yeah.
So, in section A?
Yeah, those, that's some cleanup that staff needs to do.
Yeah, do a search, word search for sketch.
Yeah.
Sketch, take it out.
That, sketch will be changed to concept.
So, page 79.
Yeah, I've got.
16-1140.
I got it marked, so.
Good catch, James. Okay, so we're good with article 11, right?
Oh, yeah.
It's the same list as, as in article 10. Article 13?
16-1360 of the revised code, page 86.
Well, we don't have to talk about major public improvements anymore, because it's, all we do is comment, and the board is gonna make a decision about it, so.
And we'll add language back in about planning commission review and comment.
And then I'm gonna take out all other public improvements that are minor in scale with a minor, like shall be submitted to the manager for review. I don't, again, that's not.
We don't know what a minor one is.
And it, that's not really how it happens.
Next one?
This, next one is article 17, which is
We, we decided already, I thought we already gave direction that the roadway design criteria and standards was, was removed, and you were gonna reference the, whatever, the state building roads
Right.
manual, or whatever it is.
Fred went through, I went through it, and it's got eliminated a lot, left the stuff that wasn't in the standards.
Right, and we were gonna do that, too, with a plant list, or something?
Noxious weeds.
Noxious weeds, right? Now, we're gonna do it with the urban, or with the flood drainage.
Exactly.
Right? We're just gonna reference some outside document.
Exactly, so that we don't have to keep updating ourselves.
So, there was a fair amount that came out of there. So, that shortened up that section. Basically, what happened in the street standards, they took a lot of stuff out of our code and we put it in there when the engineers wrote it.
Right.
That's what boiled out, the whole, what's the word?
So, is there anything really to discuss in article 17?
Not really, not really.
Okay.
Because it, what was in the old code is pretty much is taken care of with the standards.
18, we said no discussion.
Under, something that was discussed, what is on page 103, which is section 16-17 80, number four, C4. That had to do with the minimum distance, oh, the soft trail, the vegetation.
Correct.
We revised that language.
They made it clear, same, same rule, clearer language.
Okay? Anything else?
Let's see, so that moves us on to, for further discussion items, article 19, signs? Uh, yeah.
32, page five. Article 32. Telecommunications facilities.
Well, we have a couple in, we have item one in landscaping.
Yeah, article 21.
Yeah, article 21, 16-2110. And this has, this is with regard to the plant list that we were.
Prohibited plant list, right?
Yeah.
And we were asking if the state or someone generated that list, so we wouldn't have to maintain it.
And Commissioner Folsom emailed us some information that we used, and the parks department and Kendra all agree on, on using the.
State of Colorado.
Right, it's way over on page 140. 16-2110, grant B, grant A, L, L as in lead. 140.
Is medical marijuana listed as a non-essential?
They're not done with the bill yet, so you know.
We're gonna have a lot less trouble with all sorts of things.
So, it moves us on to, well, actually, something that Kendra mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. Article 29 was the floodways and floodplain language she deleted.
And I will just add a one sentence saying, you know, it's subject to the urban drainage standards that are applied by Boulder County, so that we are consistent. We're not just saying, oh, you can go build in any flood plain or floodway, but we don't have to.
Pointing to it.
Okay.
So, article 32, telecommunication facilities. This is, this section was revised pretty substantially. We went through and added some language with regard to heights.
Of.
Yeah, the accessory lights.
Accessory lights, superior lights. We included plan developments as a zone district, where they can have a commercial mobile, I mean, a telecommunication facility.
So, you can have a telecommunication facility in a PD?
Yeah.
As long as you have a special use permit? Is that what you're saying?
Well, you have to.
Different types.
You know, whatever, you know, whatever it takes in that district. A special permit.
Right, a special permit.
You need a permit for a tower, so.
Right. And, and these districts, they're listed, and that's consistent throughout this article. Because there's rules about towers, there's rules about building mounts, there's rules about wall mounts. So, we include plan developments, you can have, that they're in our specialty permit.
There's some federal law or something, right, that you can't limit people's access to certain technologies, right?
Right.
Like an HOA can't say you can't have a satellite dish.
Right.
Or a solar panel.
Yeah, there are particular, it depends on the type of technology, there are fixed wireless antenna, there are satellite dish antenna, and then there are cell towers. What we, what we commonly refer to as cell towers, they all have different regulations.
Right, but that's in the case of, that's a commercial interest where you would be, someone would be broadcasting, as opposed to receiving, right?
Right, receiving, yeah, there's nothing we can do about satellite dish antenna, well, you can, we can pass regulations on satellite dish antenna and fixed wireless antenna, but we have basically any regulations we pass, the last sentence would have to say, if any of these regulations has the effect of, you know, diminishing the quality of the signal, they shall not apply. So, they're sort of meaningless, this, this point. So, we can impose, you know, the satellite dish must be colored a certain way to match the building, and must be located in the rear of the building, but the moment that our regulation diminishes the signal, or the quality of the signal, it doesn't apply anymore, so.
So, like limiting a line of sight antenna to the height of the building would
Right.
not work.
Exactly, or saying all satellite dish antenna must be in the rear of the, of residential structure. If there's no line of sight, that doesn't work, therefore, we can't do it.
But in this case, we're primarily talking about?
This is cell towers.
This is cell towers, right?
This is cell towers, yes. And, and the telecommunications acts as a cell towers, we cannot limit competition, basically, we can't prohibit a competitor from entering the market by saying, you know what, we have enough competition in Superior, we don't want you.
Can we, are we allowed to say that you all have to locate on one tower?
No, unfortunately. We, we encourage co-location by granting, you know, by reducing fees, or speeding up the application and approval time, or there's a lot of, making it not a special use permit, making it subject to administrative approvals, so there are a lot of, you know, sort of carrots that you can offer, but it's the stick that's a problem.
This just reminded me of something, can you get those guys to replace the trees up?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. Unrelated, but if you've been up there, you've seen it, the trees are all dead around.
Are they?
Yeah.
Well, that's because you have to water trees.
I know, you have to water them. The wind blows there, too, up there, I hear.
Yeah, a little bit, doesn't it?
Anyway, sorry. I've been meaning to say something.
That'll be, that'll be eighty foot high in no time, don't you worry.
These are all changes that you came up with, right? To the, to this telecommunications.
Actually, the.
The original, yeah, the original, not the changes that are shown in red line here, but the original new chapter we drafted based on the federal law and updating the terms, really, a lot of the terms were outdated because the technology is moving so fast, that the terms we had didn't match what was coming forward.
Like radio and television repair.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
That's too many ham radio towers you'd put on CR.
The substantives updated change was the worst, you know, the terms changed, but the Federal telecommunications act still is in place, and we still are subject to all the same restrictions.
Okay. Anything in particular anybody wants to talk about here?
No.
Are we ready to move on? Moving on, okay.
Moving on.
Article 34. SOBs.
SOBs.
I love talking about SOBs.
Well, number one doesn't apply anymore.
Right, correct, we'll change that back.
Oh, number one on your list, that's right.
Which is, yeah, back to low industrial. Language has been added in the revised code under subsection B for measuring distance restrictions.
But can you restrict it? Even if you have a mechanism for measuring a distance restriction, can you restrict it if it's the only piece of property that allows it?
Only if that was zoned right next to a school or something.
Right, it would be, is our only.
We have three property zones, light industrial, CDOT, the self-storage, and the Cuffner property on the corner of Gold Creek.
So, none of those are within 100 miles of a church or a school?
Are they within residential, though, I thought?
Yeah.
Residential.
Been residential.
At least one of them is.
Well. Proximity, proximity to a public park.
We need to check, we have to provide one, and it'll have to be one, we have to provide one property that today they could walk in and say, I'm putting an SOB here.
At least apply to it.
And it has to comply with the distance requirement, so we would have to check, we have to measure to see if 500 feet.
The Cuffner one doesn't, and the CDOT one doesn't, and the.
We're okay with the CDOTs.
Guardian is within 500.
And guardian doesn't.
It's not guardian, it's.
No, no, this story. None of those, none of those work with the 500-foot restriction.
Why doesn't CDOT?
Because there's a house right across the street.
That's in Boulder County.
It's not in our town. Is that relevant?
Oh, so we don't care as long as it's not in our town?
We're talking about the legality of, of doing it, so I care.
Doesn't matter, you know, I mean, it says you can't locate it within 500 feet of any areas of residential use, we don't care because it's in Boulder County.
Yeah, so, so none of our, none of our properties apply.
So, then we need to change it, I agree.
That, that needs.
So, what we're gonna have to do is come up with a distance that works.
Six feet.
To allow that one property.
To allow that one property.
And which one property are we talking about?
Cuffner and CDOT.
Well, if we're doing on Guardians doors, that puts it close to Sagamaw, if you're doing on CDOT.
There's none. There's none, it's gonna, it's gonna end up being 75 feet.
Oh, that, that one, yeah, that won't work.
That, that number is gonna be really tiny.
I mean, we don't have to have any number either, you know, I mean, if we know that what we have zone industrial now is gonna, you know, is the only place we want it, then we don't have to have a number, because it's just pretty common language.
There's certainly no, no schools or churches or.
Can we get rid of, that's the only way you can get rid of the residential limitation, and just get 500 feet.
Public park also.
Right, yeah, it's a park right there.
It's a park, yeah.
Except for, for the CDOT property.
Not near CDOT.
Put it at the ice rink.
What about CDOT, there's no park near CDOT.
No, CDOT's the only one that.
CDOT's the only.
Why not put a strip club at the ice rink, and then you could have, like, naked skating?
Okay, so, should we get rid of the residential use? Because that seems to be the only one that can.
And the park, and parks.
Well, no, we can CDOT.
Because we want it to, we want the park to keep it from happening at the other two properties.
Correct.
But the park does not inhibit the CDOT property, the only thing that inhibits the CDOT property is residential.
And the fact that CDOT runs a plowing operation there?
That's fine. Nobody cares about that.
I don't care about that.
Okay.
Did they come up with enough money that they're gonna pay CDOT to move that whole operation?
I think it seems like a good strategy.
Yeah.
The other thing is, we can say area zone for residential use within the town's boundaries, and that way that would work with CDOT, too, right?
Yeah, yeah, for now.
Still keeping the distance restriction?
Mm-hmm.
Definitely no.
For the moment.
Yeah. Is that it? On 34?
So, then if they come in and develop that land and don't make it residential, it's still.
Still applying.
It still works?
Yeah.
Okay. If they put residential, then we have to revisit this.
Okay?
Okay.
So, it's 9:10. And the question is, yes, do we want to continue this to a date certain?
Is there a hurry to get this done?
Is, yeah, I don't. And, and so, then we could go. I was gonna say, we could stop, and then, stop, continue this, and then talk about the next two sections, just the next two items, or pages, or whatever, in the next.
There's some items. There's some items...
There's some items, I think, in here.
Questions for the attorney we might want to go through.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I guess that's the other thing, since the attorney's here... Of course, the attorney's got to be here for public hearing no matter what.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I would be here if the hearings continued. So I'm happy to answer questions tonight, or we can get...
We have two items for next meeting, but one is the clear wire site development plan.
Okay.
And the second one is medical marijuana.
So is there any pressing reason why we have to finish or move forward past where we are tonight, at this point? Then why stay out past 9 o'clock? I don't...
I'm just throwing it open, if you guys want to continue, or do we want to... Do we want to continue tonight, or do we want to continue to a date certain?
I would prefer to continue to a date certain.
May 18th is the next meeting.
But if we have two other items...
Because I may not going to be here, too, I guess.
I will be here.
For some reason, there was a reason, perhaps, I would.
Yeah, it's actually got to be the meeting after the next meeting, because the next meeting has two items on it already.
Well, so...
I think... I mean, we do have two items.
I may not be here.
What's the date of that meeting?
May 18th.
No, the next meeting.
It's quite possible I won't be here for the next meeting.
It's June 1st.
June 1st?
Yeah, I won't be here June. I don't think I... Let me double check.
June 1st is the Monday, Tuesday after Memorial Day weekend, just in case. Any of you have house voting plans or...
Well, I know we're getting into vacations these other things as well, so...
June 14th is the one.
I could be here on the 18th.
15th.
It may just be late. In this case, if we did this later, if we had room, time, we could continue it.
You won't be here on the 1st, June 1st.
No, the 18th, right.
Oh, yeah. May 18th, I am, yeah.
Is anybody else not here on the 18th of May? Because I... I could be here, but I may be late, so we could start the other things and then do...
That would be workable.
Okay? Let's do that. Let's continue this to agenda item 3, or whatever, on the 18th. Is that okay? Everybody good with that? Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah, you have to continue to a date.
Because we need a motion to continue.
Will we continue the meeting till...
May 18th.
May 18th.
The public hearing. Public hearing.
Look, sorry, the public hearing. Till May 18th, 2010.
Motion by McKinnis, second by McCool. Any discussion?
It's a MAC motion.
All in... It is a MAC motion. All in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous.
I'm back here, buddy.
Okay, that passed.
Oh, sorry, it's a big motion.
Okay, we will do that. Thank you. And then, moving on quickly through the agenda items. Staff announcements miscellaneous. Can you update everyone on the status of the... Of the... Of our terms?
Yes. So Christian Pressesator, Rip Master, McCool, and Hinkle are all up for reappointment, consideration of. The only... Jason got back to me and said he was... Wasn't interested in seeking reappointment, so we'll have one... We have one vacancy. And the board has opened up all vacancies on the advisory committees to whoever's interested once... We have not received any applications for the planning commission. So my recommendation to the managers is going to be reappointment of the three that are... That are seeking it and continue to seek applicants for the vacancy.
At this point, is Jason actually done?
He is done.
Okay, so we actually need to elect a vice chair, right?
Yeah.
Do we... Do we do that in a regular meeting, or we do it now, or...
We can do it now.
Sure, that's fine.
Because...
And he may want to replace the chair. I don't really know, actually.
Are you calling an election? This is just like Britain.
It's like Britain, that's right.
And then after we have a full planning commission, after we fill the vacancy, you can reconsider appointing a vice chair if you want at that time.
Right. But in the meantime, we still need... We're going to need somebody... We'll need somebody for the beginning of the meeting this way, because I won't be here, so... So... Anyone want... Anyone want to nominate someone? Or nominate yourself?
I'll nominate Craig.
Remember that fellow.
Okay? There's one nomination. I was... I've seen that nominating Bob, actually.
I think Bob would be a good choice.
So...
Although I'd be happy to do it, too, if Bob doesn't want to do it, so... I'd have to do it, too.
Okay? So we have... Do we... We have two nominations, I guess.
Arm wrestling?
We just do a little vote here, is that...
Anyone want to give a speech about...
All in favor of Craig as vice chair, please raise your hand. One, two, three. All in favor of Bob as vice chair, please raise your hand. One, two.
If you, I'm still...
Three. Did you vote?
Phyllis voted for...
No, I'm sorry, I didn't. I voted the first time.
Yeah, it's three to three.
Three to three. Yeah, come on. You can't chicken out of this.
We could do...
We want to get out of here. All right. We'll revote. All in favor of Craig, please raise your hand.
I'll vote for myself.
There's four. And all in favor of... Okay.
Put the call up. Craig, there you go.
No, I changed my vote that time.
Yeah.
All right.
And the planning commission, like I said, we can reconsider this after we have all nine members.
New board.
We'll see how Craig does this.
Okay.
I remember Joe's first days and your first days, so I'm not afraid to... I'm not afraid to fumble a little bit.
Let's just say we didn't set the bar very high. Okay, so that's that. Any other announcements?
No. The town board is going to have a work session on the community park east on Monday, the 10th, if anybody's interested. It'll be at 6:00 PM here at town hall.
Okay.
And I'll let you know as soon as I have more information on the appointments. And then your drafting language for the medical marijuana for the 18th?
Yeah, I mean, I guess the big question is, are we going to ban or not ban?
Well, I think the board's taking that position already.
Ban? Okay, yes, I'll have language.
But we didn't get to ban.
We do now. Well, again, this isn't yesterday. As of yesterday, we get to ban.
Evolving.
But it's crazy.
But they made a bunch of amendments on the floor, so we're still waiting for the final. And there's this called... So-called local option, so you can ban.
Okay. Okay? Okay, I guess we're...
It's crazy. I personally don't understand the whole thing, like how it became hundreds of businesses overnight.